Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jonathan Gale. I am the chairperson of the Dyson Commission on Disability. And this afternoon, before we get started and go any further, I just want to let everybody know that this meeting is being recorded. You can upload it later and watch it on YouTube. We're also available, I believe, live. If anybody wants to join us or does join us, and we'll have public input at the end. Before we go any further and do anything else, if we could all just rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unafidion, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So our agenda overall has been quite short because we have three of the four candidates so far who submitted their applications to be voluntary members like we all are on the Commission on Disability. Thank you all. We did have a fifth member who submitted an application. That was Mr. Robert Woods. Mr. Woods has since, as of late yesterday, withdrawn his application. So we have four applicants with us today. Three are here, and the one who is not here, I hope, is on his way. What I'm going to do before we even go to all business really quick is I'm going to give each of you a copy just of the questions, those three, that we're going to be asking later. So you can just look them over. Simple. As they ask these questions, it's really for your conversation with us when we have your interview at the end. And when we have the interviews, what I'm going to ask the other two or three of you to do is just to wait in the other room for a minute or two while one speaks. And that's only so that you're not piggybacking each other's conversation or answering on each other's time. Have a separate conversation with each of you. If that's okay. So knowing that, I don't know before if any of the other members have anything to say, we'll introduce each other first. As they said, my name is Jonathan Gale. I'm the ADA coordinator for the town of Dyson and the chair of the ADA Commission. And Kevin?
Kevin Smith, member.
Jennifer Luchowski, member. Nicole, no, it's not me.
Thank you, Nicole, the member. Yes, and thank you for all of your service that you've been giving to us.
At least we get the continuity.
The process. Yeah, the continuity of keeping you here. So hopefully that will last.
Yes.
Thank you very much. So we're going to start with all business real quick and just go through the Library Building Committee. As you all know, I am a member of the Library Building Committee and have been since the beginning, which I appreciate the town making sure that anything related to ADA needs, concepts, ideas, plans, et cetera, have a seat at the table for that. We have met several times recently with regard to the more recent planning. We will be having an open house sponsored by the Library Building Committee and the Library Trust. The open house for the building for people to see what it's going to look like on the inside and how it's going to be designed will be a week from this Saturday on the 13th. And that's going to be from 1:00 to 3:00. The plan is where we come in as the ADA Commission specifically is I will be there and I will be stationed in a certain spot, as will the other members of the New Library Building Committee, so that when folks come in, we can talk about what each of the components of the new library will bring. So in our case, for example, I'll be able to talk about where the ramps are going to be, where they're going to be located, what the disability services and resources that would be in the new library are going to be. That will be my role and any of your roles if you're able to join and help out as well, if you'd like as members of the Commission. And again, that will be a week from this Saturday, from 1:00 to 3:00. And that's going to be at 2:07 Main Street at the new, could be the new library building if it's voted on at the town meeting.
Coming 12:45 for the picture for them.
Yes.
Everyone's welcome.
Yeah, and there'll be a picture. We're asking people who want to be involved in taking a picture to actually be there at 12:30. And between 12:30 and 1:00, they'll be taking some pictures. And all of the pictures potentially will be to put it on the front of the new town book report that'll be coming out in a few weeks. So if you want to be potentially featured on the front page of the new town report, feel free to show up. Our new dog, Oki, will be there as well. And he'll be our, probably be right in the front of the bill and picture, I imagine, something we feature as well. But anyway, if people would like to join and see what's going on, we'd love to have people show up. And that would be great. I'm going to go on to B now, which is the continued conversation about the ADA budget. The budget overall for the ADA Committee, if you will, or the coalition, us, we'll say, was voted on with no increases, with the exception of the 2%, which is a $60 increase. So there's no change in that budget. There was confusion in the way it was going to be done, whether it was going to be separately as the ADA Coordinator's position, quote-unquote, salary position, and then a separate budget for the Commission. That hasn't fully been decided yet, to some extent. So as of now, the Board of Selectmen, perhaps you can correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole, has voted to level fund the ADA budget that was submitted last year.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then further than that, job description and so forth, we'll follow it in one of the other, in your meetings in the future of the Board of Selectmen for the ADA Coordinator. Anybody have any questions about any of the budget or the building so far?
I just want to add, and it's kind of somewhat related to the budget, is at some point in the future, maybe in our next meeting, we can put it as an example to, and it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't have anything to do with you personally, but I think that we need to have a discussion about separating the ADA Coordinator from the Commission on Disability, only because it's just an additional group to hold that person accountable. Or if Jonathan remains the ADA Coordinator, if it's somebody else, kind of similar to what the Planning Board does and what Conservation does, like all these other committees, it's, you know, I don't think that the ADA Coordinator should be the driving force behind the COD necessarily.
And I think originally, when the Commission was established, so I'm prefacing what you're saying by saying, I don't have any objection to that either because when the Commission was established, the intent was eventually, when the Commission was up and running and strong enough for the Coordinator to hand it off to someone else to be the chairperson of the ADA Commission. So I think we're getting to that point. We're obviously interviewing more people today. So, you know, that, I would rather be the ADA Coordinator for the town than wearing both hats. So we can, I'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Separate, but related, if we want to put on the agenda. I was noticing Conservation has its own section of our website, but we don't have a section as a Commission. The only thing on the website is like the minutes that are on the Town Clark's page.
Yep.
And then there's a description of what the ADA Coordinator is, but there's no Commission.
Not the Commission, no. And I've spoken to Leanne about it too, and to Justina about it, who works with me, so that we're going to start posting things. And we want to post the Commission bylaws. We want to post other things that the Commission is doing. We make sure that things can occur. So there's a bunch of things to get posted in the next two weeks or so.
Yeah, and if we can put like a little blurb about what it takes to be a volunteer for the COD because as I was talking to people, they were asking for information. And I was pointing them to, you know, M O D.
M O D's website.
Yeah.
Yeah. I hear you.
Well, I think a big part of that too, so actually I transitioned into this conversation, but unrelated, I spoke to the town administrator this morning, and we were talking about, because I didn't know where we were about with the budget. I didn't watch like the phone call meeting. Two is that I think that the move that the town's going towards is that the ADA Coordinator's salary is going to be a not-to-exceed number. So, and I kind of just asked the question of, well, whatever project comes up, is there the possibility of, you know, extending that amount? And his kind of immediate answer was no. It's going to be the job of the COD to make sure that we focus the ADA Coordinator and stand within the amount of time allotted to stay within the budget, which I don't necessarily agree with.
I don't necessarily agree with that either. And I would think that there would be a stipend associated with a special project when that comes up, so that the ADA Coordinator has a salary. And then if there's a special initiative that is going to require more outside of the regular job description, then there would be, you know, a subsidy with that.
Well, I think, I think the, there's a couple of different factors there. And one is that with regard to the salary and the position of the Coordinator, we'll just stay with it for a minute, and then I think we'll move forward. But the position right now is $3,000. Let us put the figure out there.
$3,060.
$3,060, once it's approved. The state has recommended different figures and different values than what the town is doing. Those state figures and those state values are significantly higher than what the town is willing to do at this point. The other thing that's relevant to this is the work that the ADA Coordinator does for grants in town. And I'll give you an example. When all of the grants in town are written, one of the things the town has never done is incorporated anything for administrative cost into most of their town grants. It doesn't matter what it is, they don't do it. Most grants allow you to put a percentage anywhere from 5% to 15% of a grant for administrative costs and oversight into the grant, but the town's never done it. One of the things that we talked about potentially, and we have our liaison here, so maybe we can get her thought a little bit, is having a percentage built into any grant. So for an hypothetical example, the grant, which is going to be another item we discussed in a minute for the Rural Library Grant. So as an example, that grant's $20,000. If that grant were approved, we built in $1,000 of that for administrative cost. If the Coordinator or the person administering the grant were receiving 25% of that, that's $250. But the town still holds on to $750 for other administrative costs that they before didn't budget for. So it becomes a win-win for the town. Now they've got an administrative value to use for these types of grants, anything related to an ADA component whatsoever, or any component, really, doesn't have to be ADA. But if ADA is written into the grant or the ADA Coordinator, whoever he or she is, has any, you know, anything to do with the grant at all because of oversight or because of planning or because of writing. So that's something to consider as well. I don't know, Nicole, has a...
I have a question about that. So is my understanding that a grant had that, like, built in as something that you could add? But is that not, or is that something that additionally?
No, most grants have...
So it's up to the grant writer. So the person's preparing the grant report, and you can put that line item in there. And if you don't put that in there, then you don't have it in your budget.
But the town has never put it in there, ever.
And then I have one other question in regards to, when the state brings us numbers, where are they getting these numbers from? From my understanding, I see most towns have joint positions. So are they taking that joint position and figuring out how much they get for one position and how much they get from other? And that's how they're getting those numbers?
They're either looking at joint position or they're looking at separate, standalone position.
Okay.
And I can send that to you again if you want me to, so that you can see that to everyone here. But for example, one of the things the state recommended is that the ADA Coordinator not be the fire chief and not be the building commissioner and not be the police chief and not be somebody in the Board of Selectmen's office or town administration. They recommend it be a standalone person that's familiar with all the titles, for example.
They have a lot of towns to talk to because a lot of the towns, it's a...
The problem...
...pages of a...
Exactly. And I don't disagree with you. The problem with it is that the Commonwealth is just beginning to really look at legislation that would provide mandates for the towns. So they don't have that yet. These are the recommendations for the Mass Office of Disability. It's not, there's no mandate that says you have to do it. It's the preferred methodology.
And I kind of brought this up, I think, prior to you being on the Board of Selectmen, Nicole was just on, because it isn't a mandate. So we don't have to do it. But, you know, we took our accomplishments, like having such a great accessible website. We used the grant to do that. So it's like, it's not a good look for the town to be like, oh, look how great we are with accessibility, but we're gonna, you know, not really recognize M O D's recommend... Like, I think we should continue on the path of being a model town and like, kind of middle around. I don't think, like, I think we're all aware that we don't have the amount of funding in this town to like, for it to be this big elaborate, you know, high-paid position. But we've got to kind of, I think, more reasonably moving forward. And I think genuinely, one second.
Yeah, sure.
I think that if, if you, as Kevin said, if you look, for example, the website, if you look at the walkway at Town Hall, if you look at the North Dyson Highway, thanks to Parks and Rec Commission with Kevin as well, if you look at the other parks, if you look at the school ramp, if you look at the restaurants, we can go on and on and on about so many things that if it weren't for this Commission and the ADA Coordinator wouldn't have existed a few years ago. And potentially could have put us in, and still could, with other, so many other things, put us in legal trouble or lawsuit trouble. So I think the way the state looks at this too is that to have a Coordinator who is familiar with all titles and has the training and the background for it and a reasonable, a number of hours with a reasonable salary attached to it, if for no other reason, if you don't look at anything else, is an insurance policy in the future. Because the Justice Department, US Justice Department, not the state, but through the state, is more and more now looking at towns who aren't compliant and going after them for not being compliant. So the towns you're talking about that don't have a dedicated person or don't have the right person in the position are becoming much, much more open to federal suit. And that has, regardless of administration, been empowered federally. So, and that's one of the things that M O D has made clear to this town already, is that it can be more vulnerable for a town like ours.
Does the state tell us, so I think you've given a number a couple times, is it 20% of our residents?
So the answer to...
Identify as disabled?
The answer to the average question is, they overall say that nationally, 20% of the population have disability. But keep in mind, most disabilities, unlike me who are profoundly blind, for example, most of those disabilities are hidden. And, you know, if you're profoundly deaf, for example, and nobody knows, that's a hidden disability. I'm not a hidden disability, it's I'm easily white-cane. If you have a wheelchair, not a hidden disability. If you have dyslexia, hidden disability. In Dyson, oddly enough, the numbers are actually higher. And when you look at, for example, the school, in the school, in our school system, roughly 23% of the children identify as having disability of some sort or another. That doesn't mean they're all in an IEP or 504, but 23% of the kids have disability. In the middle-aged range of all of us, it's about 18%. And then once you get into seniors, it goes up again to about 26%.
And we have an aging population.
And we have an aging population in our town.
I have one more follow-up to that that I just... So I was wondering if we have any data on what kind of disability? Because we want to make sure we're targeting, like, if we're just putting in ramps, we're doing this, and then, because disability can be such a rare, big range, what if it's a lot of people with alcohol? I mean, that's not helping them. So it's kind of, have we ever targeted what we're looking at in the town?
Well, I'm not sure that that's relevant. I'm sure we could find some data on it, but it's not relevant in the, if there are laws for accessibility.
No, no, not, not, I'm talking about, I want to make sure that we're not missing a population just because we're growing by laws.
Sure, sure, I get that. But I don't know how that data would inform our work.
Let me, let me...
No, if we knew that more of our residents had substance abuse, we could do some work on that.
Well, we would still have to do the...
Oh, yeah, definitely. I don't want to away from ramps.
No, 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 but let me, let me, let me give you...
I don't want to miss the population.
So let me give you a specific answer to that that I know you're familiar with a little bit. Okay, the human study. Okay, the study out of BMC that you're involved with, and then I'm involved with.
Oh, the Healing Community Study, yes.
The Healing Community Study, okay. With the Healing Community Study, one of the reasons that our town is part of that study is because our number of people who have disability when it comes to alcoholism and drug abuse is disproportionately high. If it weren't for that, partly, the three towns that were incorporated as part of, as part of that state study, we might not be included to that.
And that's why I brought it up.
Right, right. So that's why I'm saying we don't have actual numbers. You can't say that 2.6% are alcoholics, 2% are, you know, have, you know, drug abuse problems, you know, 4% of others. There are so many other factors that come into this. For example, people with disability are disproportionately likely to face physical abuse. They're more likely to face emotional abuse from caretakers, family members, et cetera, et cetera, friends. The Healing Community Study that you and I are both involved in, you know, we see the numbers there, you see them, I see them. So that raises the question too. For example, if you have somebody else from the town, you've asked me before to, for example, to get involved in Healing Community. If you have somebody else from the town, like the building commissioner or an administrative assistant somewhere involved in Healing Community who doesn't have the background and the training to do that, then it doesn't get addressed properly. I've attended almost 16 hours of meetings already on that. But if I weren't doing that, it wouldn't be addressed the way it did by me being involved, for example. That's also now, so making sure that all the information that they're disseminating to our community is going to be available in alternative formats. Large gray rail, sign language interpreters will be made available for police stations and first responders. If I weren't doing that, then it wouldn't have the same validity to it to make sure through their communications, subcommittee, that it's happening. And I'm saying that because I think when you look at the limits of what an ADA Coordinator provides, you have to look at the limits, how much you're limiting for what. Because if you cut off too much, then there are things that the Coordinator can't do, that the Coordinator should be doing. And the truth of the matter is, most of what an ADA Coordinator does is unseen by, you know, we see the ramps, we see the walkways. But most of what a Coordinator does is unseen. So I don't know how to answer that right now. That's, again, that's for another conversation another day.
No, I'm going to answer my question.
Yeah, I didn't mean, I was just trying to get clarity on what you were thinking.
Well, because as a couple of health nurses, I need to know what I'm looking at in the community. And that is completely the same with this. I need to know what's in the community because the Commission could decide that they want to go help X, Y, and Z while Jonathan is doing something in regards to loss. So I mean, it's important data to have.
Sure, but isn't that something the DPHS?
Probably not.
No, there's not a breakdown. The only way you have a breakdown is...
I think they, yeah, I think they have more than they do and they don't.
If people, the other side of this is that a lot of people, when they do their census and the census updates, will say they have disability but not say what it is.
Right.
And a lot of the, a lot of the limited information that we get is a collaboration of information from the Social Security Administration, from the State Board of Health, from HHS, Health and Human Services, from the Labor Department for people in the labor force. It's a combination of all these places brought together to come up with these different values. So I can tell you, for example, that it's roughly 72% of people who are considered legally blind are unemployed. And then 84% of the people who are employed are underemployed. And that's all based on federal-state data. And we could break it down that way, based on disability, but then you'd have hundreds of disabilities to look at on your list. So...
And even that data, wouldn't that be as old as the 2020 census?
No. Yes, it would be, most of it. I think the other thing you look at is when you look at all the different types of things that we as the Commission and the Coordinator have brought in, one way or another, in the past year and a half, it's over $630,000 worth of ramps that have had an ADA component. And that could even be a sidewalk that hasn't been written correctly, so it gets funded. Or, you know, something on Center Street or on School Street, so that it gets funded correctly. And if it's not written correctly by somebody who knows how to write the ADA component, it doesn't get funded. So if you put all that together, $630,000 in one year is pretty limited. That's just my thing.
Yeah, especially if you had the, what the administrative fee built into that.
Yeah. And if you have the administrative fees built into that, even at 5%, even if it's only 5%, that's over $30,000 in administrative cost, you know, if you want to call it reimbursement for the town. And if you went on that other percentage of 25%, yes, the ADA Coordinator is going to have roughly $75,000 or $3,000 in center contracted income. But on the other hand, the town's going to have another $22,000 to help administer the grants.
I mean, that's exactly how you budget in a nonprofit when you're operating hunger grants. It's to write in the administrative costs, use it to fund your salaries for the people who are doing the work.
Absolutely. And that's the way towns should be. And that's the way most towns do do it, actually. But Dyson has never done that. Now, again, no offense to Dyson Town, Dyson hasn't even had a TA until a few years ago. Even Michael, we had Mallory, now we have Michael. But we're still not doing it. So I'm going to segue to doing it. The next thing on our agenda is the Rural Library Grant, which was written by myself and Jocelyn. And although the press release hasn't gone out yet, I can happily say that that $20,000 grant, which was specifically earmarked for ADA things at the new library, has been approved as of a week and a half ago and has been, will be funded. So that $20,000 will represent, for example, the electric doors that will be built at that library facility if it's to be approved. It will represent the interior ramp to the stage area. It will represent...
No, exterior.
No, the ramp, that ramp is interior.
No, the interior ramp is on our CPC budget.
I'm, I'll double-check.
Double-check it.
I will double-check it. It may be the exterior, I wrote it, so...
I think it is the exterior.
Because we, I think we had to write it as interior, but I'll check it. But it was, but it's been approved. So then, and then that also includes, for example, two workstations that are fully handicap accessible. The jaw speech components for people who are visually impaired to use technology. A couple of workstations that are technology-related. And also having other types of screens. Some people who are dyslexic or have autism can also use the screens in the way, the formats in the way, the formats that they need to with the right software that will be applied. And those particular computers will be separate from the others. It also includes putting together a number of workshops for residents in town. For example, using, who use or wanna learn sign language, people to learn about information for social security, people to learn for information about other aspects of different types of disability. This is for training resources for families and so forth. Total grant was twenty thousand dollars. One thousand dollars of that grant was earmarked for the administrative oversight of the grant, which means the actual amount that's being spent on these items is nineteen thousand dollars. So thank you, Jocelyn, for doing that and working on that with me and vice versa, I'm sure. And for the town administrator, for the oversight that you provided for it. And we, the paperwork to finalize everything for the acceptance of the grant is being done by Jocelyn and should be going in this week, or maybe it's already gone in a couple of days ago. So that's all done. Does anybody have any questions about that, or?
Oh, thanks for the update.
And I just lost my agenda here, if anybody has it right.
We're onto new business, consumer services.
So for new business, for consumer services, one of the things that I do for those of you who are here each month is provide, without any names or anything, just a simple update of a couple of things that I've done on behalf of consumers that are covered by HIPAA, which means I can't disclose names of what specific items were, what they wanted, and what the outcome was by individuals. So, for example, last month, we had an individual who called and needed a disability ban for a family member to get to medical facilities. And as a result of having that conversation and identifying what that person's needs were, I was able to connect them with our veterans coordinator to see if the veterans ban, which is wheelchair accessible, could be used for any services. Unfortunately, that resident has passed away, so it didn't get, it didn't get too much further. I had two other residents who I've connected with the Mass Office of Deaf and Hard of Hearing because they, one was for something at the high school, they wanted to be able to go to an event at the high school and be participatory. And because I'm not active directly in the high schools, which is another example of what an ADA coordinator should be doing, but right now, we don't have the time to do it, nor have I been asked to get involved directly in high school. In fact, just the opposite, actually. I had to go around the world in a self-addicted, deaf and hard of hearing to help this person set up the resources that they needed for the high school, which frankly took about four times longer than it should have if we were doing it directly. So that person was happy with that. And we had another person from the Mass Office of Deaf and Hard of Hearing who was going to another state facility. And actually, this was a public access facility, so that they could participate in an event. I needed to make arrangements to have an interpreter there as well. We were able to get him in the right track to do that. I had two other people who had substance abuse issues, who were looking for different resources. One was for a family member, and another one was for themselves. And frankly, because of the Healing Community Project that we're involved in, I knew where to tell them if I wasn't involved in that. What they need specifically, I don't know if I, I would've had to do some other homework to figure out where to go and where to send them. But because of that, I was able to do that quite quickly. In one case, the person had ADD, ADHD, as well as some other issues. And I think he was probably in his mid-forties and had been on the substance abuse for a long time. And the other person was, I wanna say, in her early twenties, and had just kinda hit that wall. But had a disability that enabled them to contact me as well. I've also received a number of calls from residents asking about other sidewalks on the street. And, for example, I had a call this morning from a resident who wants to talk to me about the Center Street sidewalk. Out in front of the school, he's got a wall sidewalk that, I will say, was not done correctly, but was also completed before I was brought on as the ADA coordinator. So unfortunately, there isn't a lot I can do about that, except to tell the resident what they don't wanna hear. That's just an example of a couple of the other things that I've been involved in. As you know, I've been involved in the Healing Community Project. I've also been involved with transportation, the transportation project through Serpent as well, and doing studies with some of the residents in the town, doing studies. I've sent the study out to other departments in the town that the Serpent wanted completed so that they can understand what the town's transportation needs were for persons with disability. I am sorry to say that, according to Serpent, not one other department who I sent that transportation survey to had responded. I can't, I don't have any control over that. But I take that back to you as the liaison and board of selectmen to have that conversation with board of selectmen and town administrator. Because if I'm saying the material aloud, that these agencies need to respond to determine what we need for transportation resources in this town for persons with disability, seniors with disability, and others with disability, and there's no responses back, that doesn't work for our town when we're looking for other resources, state and federal resources, and dollars for things that we're working on. So I think this goes directly to the heart of what this town should be doing when it comes to persons with disability, because our numbers are only getting higher and higher and higher. So I'm still, I'm talking a lot, I know that, I'm sorry. I don't know if anybody else has any questions about this.
I did send, you sent me that survey, so I did send it to the director at Co-op, Unprecedented, because I think it said that it didn't have to, it couldn't be like anyone within the community or whatever.
That's correct, yeah.
She, she didn't, I, she didn't finish it. Um, it was very, it was very lengthy.
Yes, it was.
And if you, if you can ever give them feedback, that would help. It's not, I understand why it was lengthy, cuz they were looking for important information. Also, that just keep, keep a lot of stuff.
Well, and I don't just say, I, I agree with you, it was, it was, I mean, I had to listen to her to do it. And it took me over an hour, an hour, almost an hour and a half, because it was so long.
Yeah.
And then there was this, there were two surveys. One was for town agencies and departments, including prime time. And the other one was for residents of the town, and for residents who have disability. I sent it to my list of residents who have disability. I sent it together, departments, to ask them to send it to residents that may have listed disability. I don't think that they did, because the other folks that I've spoken to said they never got anything. And that's a separate issue, which is we don't have one central registry in town, which I wanted to try and put together. But that takes cooperation, and we need that in order to do it. So, again.
We don't have a board of selectmen delegate to Serpent?
No, we do not, unless, as far as I know, we don't, it's not a delegate agency.
It's not listed on their website, that's what I was asking. Jeff Cavalo is the planning board.
Well, it's funny, cuz like Serpent kinda pops their head in on a bunch, like they'll pop into open space, they'll pop into planning, they'll pop into, you know, different stuff, but yeah, it's like.
Serp, Serpent is more or less the conduit for looking at grants, looking at resources, helping you look at grants, helping you look at other resources, looking at different resources that can affect the whole South Coast, South Coast community in general. What's it gonna take for thriving, for business, for industry, for publicizing? They're kind of the, the lower South Coast version of a state agency, if you will, to help bring everything together on a lot of different things. So they, to a point, only get involved either when they're asked, or they have a state project where they're supposed to reach out, or the towns, as in they take, Titan and other towns too, you have them on a, on a certain contracted basis for so many hours per year for certain types of projects. And that's kinda how it works.
Yeah, I feel like we're probably missing out as a community by not having a selectman representative as a delegate. Maybe that's something that we can bring up.
So, hold on, Mr. Hall, I'm just.
Um, for the record, I'd like to correct that. Jeff Cavalo of the planning board is Titan's representative to Serpent.
Well, Serpent has a list on their website, and it shows delegates from board of selectmen and the delegates from the planning board. And every community on there, except for Dyken, Berkeley, and Seacock, have a selectman delegate on there. So it kinda stands out as an empty space, so that's what I was going off of.
No, thank you. What, Jeff is the representative, I'll talk to the town administrator regarding if we allow to, to.
It looks like that all the other communities have to listen, yeah.
So anyway, I think we, I wanna move along if everybody has an objection, so that we don't get into the weeks on this anymore, and we don't bore our, our guests' safety. I hope you're not bored so far.
Not at all.
None of you have left, so that's good. No, and Mr. Hall said he's buying dinner afterwards, so. He doesn't know that yet, oh, he knows that.
He's got a jelly sandwich, it's all right.
There we, there we go. And the next item on our agenda is.
Interview.
The interview, the four of you. So we only have a couple of quick items after that, which we can wrap up very, very quickly. So you all four have the questions that, the six questions that I put together. And there's no special order to the questions, there's no special way they have to be answered. They're just six questions for thought, however you wanna capture them, if you wanna answer them as individual questions, or if you wanna just give us an overview that goes with it, and that's if we have any follow-ups. So in order to do this fairly, what I thought I would do is ask Mr. Hall to be a security guard, just kidding. But to ask three of the four of you at first, if you could just wait in the other room, and we could just run it a time, only because I don't think it's fair for whoever goes first to have the others hearing the same things, and sometimes it puts something, "Oh, I didn't think of that," and anything. So I don't know if one of you wants to volunteer to go first?
Let's maybe, they'll do it in alphabetical order.
Is that okay?
There you go. That makes first.
Just saying, we is first.
Thank you, guys, it's probably literally.
Can I help you? I haven't seen them forever.
Five minutes for you, good year.
Good to see you.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you.
You can pull up a chair if you want.
Yeah, I have a ticket here off the stand.
We're gonna shut it right later.
Do you want the camera on, or? And thank you for being here, so very, thank you for submitting, seriously. So you, so you have the questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want us to ask them then, or you just wanna kinda look at them and just share?
Um, alright, so my, my background is, I do a lot of advocacy. My son has a rare genetic condition, so I, for years, have advocated for his condition, human syndrome. And over the past year, I've gotten involved with online advocacy groups and podcasts, and communicating with families around the world about the needs of, of children. And so this past year, I've really dedicated to kinda broaden in the, the worldview of what a rare disease is, how prevalent it is in our society. And so, yeah, so one of the things was like ADA compliance. And I work as a civil engineer by trade, and I see it all the time. I always felt that ADA compliance was more focused on interior. Architects are very good at designing plans, and it's implemented very well within buildings, because it's easy to see, it's easy to access, it's easy to change. I feel like our communities forget that there's so much more than just access to buildings. It's access to park places, it's access to beaches. And so it's, it's a lot broader than just like, oh, let's make a wheelchair ramp. It's, it's everything. I know Kevin had done great work in getting our playground up and running. And I can't, couldn't be more proud to have that. But I know as a community, I'd love to see us to pour into making it more permanent. I think money is always a problem, which is fine, but at what point, what's the price? Like, do we have a value of, of human life or not? So I wanna, my goal is to broaden the spectrum of how much our outreach is, whether it's getting more grants, getting more people involved, and letting people understand and see where, where people are. So, um, yeah.
Okay.
No, I was just looking at the rest of the questions. This idea is like, over the first three.
How, how old's your son's name?
Uh, he's just turned ten.
Wow.
So, yeah, it's been, it's been a journey.
Is he fully able-bodied or not? If I'm asking too much, it's.
No, 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 if I'm, so he's, he's got a hypermobility, low tone, and he's probably about half the size of his peers. So visibly, he just looks like he's probably about six when he's ten.
Yeah.
He's got ADHD, dyslexia. So he runs around, he's able to maneuver around things. So for him, it's, he's got access and availability, and he does what he can, so.
Keep his sister's.
Okay, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Use a parent.
Yeah, yeah, I, I hope so. So the five pillars, I know, employment, accessibility, transportation, communication, and, and employment.
So yeah, and the reason I only put that in there, it, you were, you were pretty, pretty accurate in the model. You have different titles, there's titles one through five.
Yeah.
And, for example, the one that we work with mostly is Title II. The Title II is the public access component, and that incorporates everything that you have public access with public facilities. Title I, which is another part that we're starting to get into, is public employees. And when they need accommodation, or request accommodation, or how they're accommodated, or what their accommodation should be, and how that's all determined in that process, that's the, that's Title I, which is the public employee component. So that could be anyone from me or you as members of, of this committee, for example, of the commission, or it could be a town employee who needs, who needs more lighting in their, on their computer screen.
Yeah.
Or it could be anything whatsoever, that they don't want anybody knowing about. They would come to, myself right now, and discuss, and we would make arrangements. Title III is the public library partnership. And that, for example, if you have a doctor's office, or I'll use another location in town where if there's a small shopping district area, making sure that the restrooms are appropriate, and the, the walkways and so forth, that there's full access. Although they're private buildings, they have public access, and the public uses them, and that's what brings in Title III. And Titles IV and Title V relate more to technology and, and to media resources, for example. And that's when it comes into, for example, our website, which I'm proud to say we probably have one of the most up-to-date websites in the state, if not the most up-to-date in the state, in terms of accessibility. The state regulations are back in two thousand and five and six, and ours were two thousand and twenty.
Yeah.
So, and that's, that's how, that's where the Communications Act. But, you know, so go ahead, I'm just gonna find out what Chris knows, not what you know. I'm not gonna say it.
No, it's all, I mean, honestly, for, for me, because I, I work within land development, it's, I understand. Like, I think we called you when, when our sidewalks were going in. And I was like, there's a telephone pole in the middle of where the sidewalk's going. There's a moment, why bother with ADA compliance if you're gonna have, it's not actually gonna be accessible? And I think we reached out, and the town came out, and Tom Ferry came out, and they measured it, and they were like, oh, yeah.
And it's made a huge difference.
Yeah.
And well, actually, yeah, that was a big thing, because now, when we've moved on to Main Street, Jonathan's had a big part in that, is the planning was, let's move these poles, we'll do the sidewalks, so.
Yeah, yeah, so I do, I like, for me, I see those, like, those are things I can see and go, okay, well, that, this is just not practically logical. So that's kind of where my mindset has been. Honestly, for me, the other part was, you know, my goals are, are full accessibility, but I always, I often forget, because mine is geared towards my son and the communities those around, I forget that the communications is, is a huge aspect, so those are the areas where I'm probably lacking. It's like the public employees, it's the public access, so.
Well, I think that is just a big part, it is more likely to comment than question two. That's a big part of, and I don't know if you had come in yet, when we talked about separating the commission on disability from the ADA coordinator, because a lot of that stuff is actually gonna be the task of the ADA coordinator separately. I love where you're coming from with advocacy and.
Grants and.
They have ramps, cuz like, that's more of what the commission is, needs to move towards.
Yeah.
So that sort of, you know, energy and wanting to, you know, involve other people and, and spread the word about, you know, what we do and what you're passionate about is like probably the most important part of being on a commission.
Yeah.
Absolutely. How does a one hour a month work for you in your schedule?
Yeah, that's, that's very doable.
We try to really stick to that as much as possible, cuz we know everybody's as busy. Right now, we're four-thirty to five-thirty on Thursdays.
Yeah.
I know, in the past, we've talked about possibly changing that based on the makeup of the commission and what all the members are available to do. That's what's working right now.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I work, work around there, so.
And we always have Zoom, you know, available, so if it's like, if you can't make it in person, and you wanna pop on Zoom, that's always an option.
I, I coach my kids' teams, so.
That's, that's handy. Any questions that you have for us?
Anything else you wanna share?
Um, so overall goals for the commission, like.
I think the.
Is that two?
No, I think, I think that's not, that's a broad question, but I think the broad answer is, if we look at where the town, whether, I'm gonna be very simple, what the town didn't have three years ago.
Yeah.
Not just from the amazing playground that we put together. Again, as I say, we're always spirited by Kevin.
Yeah.
To the website, to the walkways, and all these other things. But if we look at the town beginning to recognize the need for accessible resources and accessible access, not just for the physical things, but for the other parts of everything we can provide, we have the potential to make our town a model community for the exact reasons that you have said you're interested in this, including your sons. And I think that that's our goal, is to ultimately paint our brush as wide as possible as time goes on in the years, and get everybody in the town to think about disability, not every minute of the day, but as you're driving around, and they see things, we wanna know that it's much more than what they see.
Yeah.
So I guess that's the best I can answer on this, anybody else has anything to answer to?
Yeah, I'll add that we do have bylaws, and we've gone through some exercises in the past. I won't be back on the commission since February, March. And, but we've gone through some exercises in the past to help us as a commission decide where our focus is going to be. And I think that that should be an annual thing that we do, is really look at what are the town's goals, what is the budget, and what do we think we have capacity to hit? What grants might be coming down that we could potentially garner support for, or visibility around what events might we wanna participate in, those kind of things.
I think as members, we have our individual ideas of where we would like grants to be, or where we think resources should go, or we have, you know, each of us has our million-dollar grant for something that we want.
Right.
You know, it's a question of coming together and seeing how realistic some of these things are. Some of these grants may have to be a five-year grant. Some of them, things that we wanna do collectively and separately may not even be granted, grants that are necessary, just changing mindset.
Right.
And, and attitude. So getting into the school systems, getting into other things in town, working with seniors.
Yeah.
There's housing, an example.
Yeah.
You know, that's, for me, that's a, that's, it was housing for people with disability.
Yeah.
So there's lots of things.
Yeah, I think just like, keep in mind too, it's like, we, COD's been a thing for three years, but it's still, in essence, it's still, it's a young, it's a young.
That's really.
And we've had, we've had a very small quorum. And then because of that, not having a large membership, it's like, when something comes along, like when we did the Mass Office on Disability Grant, that took up like every minute of, you know, time we had. It was very, very tech, but all the way from writing it through implementing it was like, so it's like, it's gonna be nice to have new members, new ideas, and like.
Spread the wealth, and, and then that, you know, to reassure you about not having, we don't, none of us have expertise in all of the areas at all. And so it's, that's what's nice about having a commission, is being able to bring all of the talent.
I didn't even know those five pillars, and so I. Now you know it's a ton of them. I knew that was, the title. So anything else you wanna share?
Um, no, I guess, yeah, I was gonna say, what was your biggest accomplishment you feel in the past three years?
For me personally, I think it was getting the Mass Office of Disability Grant, the final grant, which was the result of having a study done first, engineering study to see what we needed to do. Getting that grant, getting the talent to chip in some resources as well. And again, that, to me, that's, it's the most important, only because it represents the outward side of what the community sees.
Okay.
So the community sees all these walkways, these ramps, these restrooms, this website, these other things. And that's what the town equates to disability.
Right.
And we didn't have that three years ago.
Yeah, no, that's great.
To me, that's, I don't know about the other two.
I mean, I have to agree, like, obviously, a little bit partial to the Northland Playground and all. But it, it's like, yeah, the MOD grant, just it, it covered so many things, and it was, like Jonathan said, and like, once you guys are on board, we'll send you all, like, we had what was called the KMA report, which was pretty much a community-wide study of our deficits, and we, we were able to check a lot of things off of that list. It went over seven, six pages or so.
That's incredible, yeah.
So it was good, like, we, you know, we picked some pretty big IOs and knocked them off the list, so it's like, and that's, that's kinda, I think, the goal too, is we need to get back towards that too. We've been kind of wrapped up in some other businesses, going back to that original report and then prioritizing our.
Yeah, no, our needs. I think the biggest thing was like, asking those questions tells me how, how moving forward a committee is. I don't wanna join a committee that's like, I'm gonna be here, and I'm gonna be like, why did I do this? We're just dragging a team, nothing's getting done, so.
Yeah, that's why I think we need to be strategic about what are we gonna buy up? And I'm a project program manager by trade, so I'm sure that you work with some program managers, and it's all about getting it done and not having so much in-progress work.
Yeah.
So I'd rather us take on one thing, get it done, and then take on another thing than have a couple of things in progress that are just cloven around.
That's great.
Yeah, and like, just keep in mind, always with that comment, is we are still young, and the, the biggest thing that we're trying to do right now is kind of figure out how the makeup is gonna be in how the ADA coordinator, cuz that's been a big part of it, is just navigating what our role is in, in direct. Because right now, Jonathan is the ADA coordinator and a member, so a lot of it is his work in us, you know, kind of feeding off of that in a way. And we have gone through periods of time where we're not really doing a lot of work. I wish my concerns about two-foot tread.
I think, and I agree with Kevin, and I think all of us at times, they felt stagnant in terms of what we were able to accomplish.
Stagnant is fine, I don't mind stagnant, it's, it's, if nothing is being.
No, and I think, you know, keep in mind, before we didn't, before we had anything at all, we had nothing.
Yeah.
And now we, you know, we have the work that we've accomplished, we've put together our bylaws, they've been approved by the Commonwealth. We've put together our bylaws, they've been approved by the Commonwealth. You know, we've worked, started working with state agencies and various things. So we're beginning to make inroads.
Yeah.
Into different ways of life and that, I think that's the way to put it.
No, was that fun?
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
If you wanna stay, feel free to stay.
Yeah, now that you've gone, I could ask you to listen.
Yeah, I'll listen.
Who was next?
Leah.
Yeah.
Mrs. Quinn?
And we're at five twenty, so we'll try to keep them, I would say, like, there's five questions.
Well, we're kinda.
Do I just sit right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, you do.
I'll see.
I feel like I'm in the principal's office.
I have the electric chair button, so if you have a buzz on your knee, you'll.
I bet it works a few ways, I'm saying.
So Leah, what we're doing is, thank you for, again, same thing I said, for being here and for speaking about your act. It's appreciated. We can either ask you questions or you can use that sheet.
Yeah, no, you can ask.
Or you can just talk over that and it's shared.
No, I don't have anything prepared. I like to just kind of be myself.
So what brings you here?
I am here because I am a caretaker of my mom, who has been disabled for thirteen years. We moved her in with us eight years ago. So I definitely have experience with caretaking, managing, and loving someone who has disabilities. I'm extremely concerned with the state of affairs, I guess, that we are in as a community in Dayton. I have two children, twelve and seven, who are part of a great community of kids, who are some disabled, some on the autism spectrum. And I definitely see as a parent of a typical child, the barriers that are put in place for these kids. It's frustrating. I've tried to do my best as being an advocate, primarily within the school district in Dayton. And we decided to pull our children two, almost two years ago, from the Dayton school system. Mostly I'm part to frustration with, I guess the easiest thing to say is the lack of accountability and education around behaviors, just being a good human being, treating people with respect. I will say as a typical human being, I don't have a problem voicing my concerns. But I can see where people who don't have that accessibility or ability could maybe be left behind and have been left behind in this town and many others. I think that we need to do better. And I think that this is a great place to start.
I, I think that, I, first of all, thank you for sharing all of that. And I hear every single bit of it loudly and clearly. And I think that before we had an ADA coordinator and certainly before we had a commission and members like those of us here, including Nicole as now the liaison, but before as a member, to speak up on rehabbing people with disability, you're absolutely right, there was no legitimate, real voice, in my opinion. I'm saying in my opinion only, for persons with disability in the community. I hope that we're beginning to give people with disability a voice. It's a slow process, it's an uphill process. People are just getting used to hearing the word disability in our town on an open, you know, as part of open conversation. But we're starting. And if you look around at the things that we have accomplished, in general, I think in a, in a few years that we've been in existence, we've accomplished a lot. We have, you know, one percent gone, ninety-nine percent to go.
Yeah.
But that one percent is the stuff that people see publicly. A lot of what's gonna be done in the end, I think, is gonna be seeing things that people don't necessarily see publicly, but has to be done. And yes, we welcome the voices of people like yourself or things like that too. Are you familiar with some of the different criteria? I know one of the questions there is, refers to, you know, pillars and titles, but are you familiar with any of the?
I'm not so familiar with, I can absolutely, I will educate myself with it. All I do know is that I am a small business owner, so I have had to adhere to codes, being a small business owner and working with a state license to adhere to those codes and accessible requirements. I, I, my business is in the town of Rehnham, they are wonderful, they are always accessible, they are always available. So I do think that there is some challenging, I don't wanna say barriers, but I keep using that word, when communicating requests in this town and, you know, kind of getting things to even an open dialogue. Never mind to the finish line. So with this upcoming library challenge, I mean, I was at all the school committee meetings, as I know John was sitting next to me in most of those, when we were advocating for what's going on at the Dayton Elementary School and the middle school and the restrictions there, six, seven, eight years ago. Have we made improvements? Sure. Are they good enough? I don't believe so. So we have students, we also have staff members employed in the district that aren't having their needs met to date. That's concerning to me, you know. I think there needs to be more education as well with our kids who are typical. I think we need to be more thoughtful in the schools with how we are dealing with children that don't look, act, behave the same way that your child might. And we need to come together and be better human beings. It starts at home, but unfortunately, everybody does things differently, you know, and I, I can accept that. But, you know, we are the town that prides ourselves on saying things like, small town, big heart. And I am just not seeing the big heart. I'm not. So I really am here to bring something to the table, empathy, compassion, knowing what it's like to have family members who are struggling with invisible disabilities.
The only other thing that I would, I would add, and then I'll see if the others have questions, is with regard to that schools, for example, I totally agree with you, and I'd say it's open, that, that as a commission and as the coordinator, we need to be able to have more responsibility in working with our schools and more say and working with our schools. There are certain things we can't get into. Can't get into I E Ps and I S Ps and ed plans of that nature, things like that, five oh fours. But we can get into the physical plan, we can get into the things you want, you mentioned about employees who need certain types of things. We can, if the town lets us, the state will tell you that that's what an ADA coordinator for a town should be doing. Even though it's a district, they're public employees in the town. The town, certain people will tell you, we shouldn't be doing it. I would say, I would go to the state's office of disability, Mass Office of Disability, and say, we shouldn't be doing it. And that's part of the state regulation. That's something for the commission or for the coordinator later to discuss with, for the select town administrator. But having said that, there's, there's a lot to be done in the schools. But as an example of something we tried to do, we have that, we now have, at least in the middle school, that ramp out in front with, with the correct railings. And we've made all of the other doorways fully accessible in case of emergency, which didn't exist twelve months ago. None of that existed. Is it a lot? No, but is it a start? Yes.
Let me just interrupt you real quick. So I don't know if I missed this part too at all, but I just wanted to make the comment that, so there's been some conversations more primarily between the town administrator and the ADA coordinator. A lot of ADA coordinators involved in the schools, but as Commission on Disability members, we are absolutely willing to.
Yeah, they can.
To provide, you know, whether it's educational services programs and support them in any way. One thing that I'd like to see, and I think it's almost not like a subcommittee, but like have our own liaison, because now that the CPAC is kind of back up and running, it, it's regionalized, but it seems like the majority of the representation is from Somerset and the whole bit. There's not a lot of good Dayton representation on that. I do have a meeting coming up soon too, so it's like, I think that somewhere else we can get involved that kind of segues our commission into the school system.
And I think that's an example of exactly what I was just saying, very simply, because I wear both hats. And you heard us talk earlier about segueing perhaps away from the position that I'm sitting in now. Because I've worn both hats, I can sit here and I've said to these folks many times, I'd like to do such and such in schools, but we can't because I'm on the coordinator and the commission chair. The commission can do it, but until the town gives me permission to do it as a coordinator, I can't. So which means in essence, I can't.
So that's sort of our hope in separating those things. If Jonathan is serving as ADA coordinator and can come to the meetings and contribute information and be there as support, but the commission would operate in that, you know, facility, whatever we decide of the directions that we're going on. You know, we're working on a grant or we're gonna show up at the schools to do, I don't know, whatever.
Five oh four, it could be.
We're all fine.
I will, yeah, I will, because we've got a.
I'm just throwing anything out there as an example.
As a parent in the district who had children enrolled in the district, yeah, I will say that there is lacking education in, in this area from, you know. And again, we're not here to argue with the superintendent or get involved, but, you know, you have people who wanna volunteer and who want to make a difference, and it is constant paralysis. You know, it goes through the channels of, you know, let me get back to, yep, send me an email, and you're just met with kicking the can down the road again. And, you know, I have served on committees, committees before in town. I've, I've tried, it's frustrating, yeah. Most public services is frustrating, right? I'll be the first to admit that it knocks you down and sometimes you need to take a break. But I just can't sit back anymore as a resident, as a daughter of someone who struggles. We need to do better. And I'm willing to do and work with whoever I need to do, work with to make that happen.
I think the members of, of the commission overall are pretty dynamic people. Whoever, as, as you know, the, when those of us are here so far, certainly not afraid to use our voices.
Yeah, no, I have seen it firsthand.
You know, so we meet on Thursdays at four thirty once a month. We try to normally limit the meetings to about an hour. And that's usually the first Thursdays of the month, it's usually here. But also, as has been noted, it will be noted, always on the prime con if you physically can't, I know your work schedule may.
I can arrange.
Okay.
Yeah, we have Zoom too.
And there might be, there might be other occasions where excess time is needed for a half hour now, as discussed in doing different promotional types of things or something. So for example, when Kevin has the firecracker event, you know, to work a table or something like that for a couple hours or different things around town, or other events that.
Oh.
When it, when it all gets shared, it's all voluntary and all gets shared. You know, so do you have any questions for us at all?
I don't, I don't. I am pretty well versed with, you know, working on a team and running a business for the last twenty years. But you need to, you might not always get what you want, but you can kind of get somewhere. You definitely need to be able to be willing to hear other people's ideas. I, I will tell you firsthand that I will absolutely educate myself on the laws of Massachusetts. And, you know, we will, I will do my best to kind of, similar to what we need to do. I know what I've gone through just being a caregiver to someone and the paperwork and, and the roadblocks that you have to go through to be able to, to get the smallest of services.
And one of the things that I do is when different trainees come over, provided by the state or whomever, I send those out to people so that you can sign up for them and take those workshops or those two hours in services online, whatever it is, so that, and again, I would provide you with the different titles that are mentioned in the questions and so forth too, so you can look at all that. But I just said the same thing to Chris too, I said, don't feel bad because I didn't know there was five pillars.
Well, I mean, I do know, like, you know, the Americans with Disability Act, you can, uh, just for my housing, public life, job, I mean, but no, I will do my due diligence. Those are killers.
Right, I'm already, I'm already on my.
We just didn't know you.
So, so chill out if you want.
Yeah, so you can just hang in.
I will, I will.
Yeah.
Uh, Dana?
Yeah, it's a, no, um.
Mr. Tullin?
Mr. Tullin, he asked, he asked him where he had sex?
Sure.
And, and Dana had kind of a weapon.
Thanks, would you like me?
In the hot seat.
In the hot seat. If we don't let you answer, we have a buzzer, you can pull it on your knee.
Trap door.
Me too.
The large hook comes out, you know.
So first things first, same, same thing I've said to you first, and thank you for being here. Thank you for bringing this immediate application. I noticed when I, I will say, just as an aside, I noticed when I was at the meeting a few weeks ago at the school and you were speaking, there was an interest in disabilities. And I appreciate that, you saying that openly. And then followed that up by submitting an application. So thank you.
Yeah.
We can either ask you questions or if you just wanna look at what we gave you and just kind of give us a few minutes of whatever you wanna share.
No, you can ask whatever you want.
Tell us a little bit about why you're interested in becoming a member.
Well, as Mr. Gallow said, I ran the school committee and at the candidates night, I was really surprised to learn that not all the schools are fully ADA compliant. I assumed that all students had access to every aspects of the school. I teach in school, my school building is only twenty years old. We had a student last year that was wheelchair bound and she had access to absolutely every area in the school. And I assume you're wrong that this was the case. And I was really kind of taken aback by that. And I had told Mr. Smith privately that whether or not I'm elected, this is something I would like to be a part of to, to see if I can help to make things a little bit more accessible.
So you know that one of the things that we will be getting into eventually, possibly, when I say we, I mean, the commission, maybe coordinator, if I have to have, only will be different. But will be probably, they wanna get into some different aspects of things at the school. And I think your knowledge as a teacher and what it takes for kids to survive and thrive. Just giving my opinion would be almost beneficial.
Sure, I do have a lot of.
There's twenty-five years. In terms of what's needed there. Do you have, do you have other relatives? Or do you know of anyone in the community who has different, other types of disability rather than just the kids at the schools?
Uh, I wear earrings myself. And even with them, my job is just getting really difficult because, you know, to kids just, except when they're in the cafeteria. Everything's so loud. But I am finding it a struggle. Myself, I've had seven knee surgeries and I worked in a building that was well over a hundred years old. And for three months, I had to go up and down three flights of stairs with crushes. So that was, you know, a temporary disability, but, you know, I can really appreciate the struggle that some people deal with. And, you know, I think that people with disabilities, whether or not they're permanent or temporary, you know, and when you, when you have to work through something like that, you're, you're a tough person. And, you know, I think that, you know, life is tough enough for people that have disabilities and, you know, why shouldn't we try to do what we can to maybe make things a little bit more easier and accessible?
I think one of the things that, you know, all of you have touched on, like, when we learn is the school system and things that, you know, could be looked at differently and so forth too. The other thing I think it's important to not recite, and I'm just throwing this out there, is, you know, other types of disabilities, such as mental illness, for example. And a lot of, you look at a lot of the clients that Nicole works with in her programs, who are adults with different types of disability, you know. A lot of it, you know, you have adults in, in her programs who are thirty, forty, fifty, functioning as, you know, seventeen, eighteen year old. I have a son who's forty-five, functions as a seventeen year old. And I think it's important to never recite of those individuals too, because what this commission does goes way into those, eventually might go into some of those aspects. Kevin, for example, is very interested in things with best buddies and programs like that as well.
Well, I'm aware that some of the schools have the program, I don't recall her name, but there are kids with disabilities and they play basketball with a regular.
Everything's good, I guess.
That's it, yeah, and my wife is the guidance counselor and she was involved in that in her school. And it's just fairly something really nice to see. And, you know, you touched upon before in, in your reading about, you know, the visible disabilities and the ones that we, we can't see. So I, I don't know a lot about it. I noticed one of the questions was the five pillars. And I'm not the person that's gonna BS and tell you that I, I know something I don't know. But really, my desire is just to try to, you know, help my community in, in any way I can. And I'm really just kind of touched by the fact that, you know, there are people that have a difficult time. And, you know, if there's any way that I can lend any of my talents or skills to, to help make things a little bit better for other people.
The short answer to the five pillars, if you will.
Okay.
Is that I would send, if you, if you remember, I would send all of that out to you and you would have some enormously boring bedtime reading.
I'm sure.
Yes, yeah, I would give you that. And again, as I've said to others, any trainings that come up or anything like that through the Commonwealth or otherwise, I would forward to you always, if you're able to find a time to do it or download it or something.
Well, that's something else. I mean, my, my, my kids are grown at the end of my teaching career and I, and I do have some more time on my hands. And I think I'd spend it doing something productive that might benefit us.
Any other questions, Jen, Kevin?
I just wanna make sure, one hour a month for a meeting, we could, in person and Zoom is fine.
In person, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
I just wanna thank you for your comment about that, you know, people with disabilities have a hard enough time, let's make it a little bit easier, because, I mean, I've, I've heard the opposite end of the spectrum in this town where it's like, well, it's not that bad, you can just suck it up, which like infuriates me to like no end. So it's so nice to hear, you know, that sentiment.
It's easy when the shoe's not on your foot, right?
Exactly, so.
And as I said, as I said to the other two, I'm sure I'll say, and to, to Dana as well, that, you know, you consider where this town was a few years ago, and we've made a lot of progress in a short amount of time. And, you know, one more minute.
I don't know, it sounds like we could make some more. Yeah, we haven't done much.
Well, it is good. I mean, so what we've heard so far, that a lot of the focus is, you know, is on children, is on schools and just your experience, you know, having to teach, you know, being a teacher, your ability to communicate with teachers is probably going to be a little bit better than us coming from like the parent side of things. Where, you know, where, where, just, you know, negotiating. No, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
If you want, I know you have to go, but.
I do.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Well, thanks very much for your time.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for volunteering to be last. I know it's hard to be last week.
So, um, same thing I've said to each person again, which is number one, appreciate you putting the application in. Really appreciate your interest. Um, and even thinking about being a volunteer for persons with disability. I'm gonna put it this way, is we can either ask you questions or if you want to just look at what I've handed out and just kind of give us a little bit about you and your background or not.
I'm okay with you asking questions.
So the first question would be, what, what's your, what makes you interested? What, what, what brings you here?
I currently have disability, I'm deaf, I read less. So, um, if you're not looking at me, I have no idea what they're saying. So I understand some of the challenges people face.
Can I ask you, have you always been profoundly deaf or?
No, I have multiple sclerosis, so my nerve endings are dying. So I used to be able to hear very well and it's just gotten progressively worse. So, you know, everything sounds like Charlie Brown, if I can hear anything at all.
Personally speaking, I had a fair amount of vision until 35 years ago. And the last 35 years, I haven't seen anything. So I get that.
I work at our middle school, so like our fire alarm, when the fire alarm goes off, I don't hear it. I can feel it most of the time. Some of the rooms that I'm in, um, they put in flashing strobe lights.
Some of the rooms?
Yeah, it was, it's a never ending battle. When we go to the high school and the first day of school, we sit there and I sit there for two hours not knowing what they're saying because there's no captions, there's no, nothing, yeah. I think now I say, but.
Can I ask what you do at the high school?
I'm actually at the middle school. I am a paraprofessional and I work with children with disabilities.
I was, the only reason I was asking because I was thinking of your combination. So that's all.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
I was just thinking of the combinations that you need yourself, not from us, but from the school.
Yeah, so, um, we have a room that I'm in sometimes during the day and they put a strobe light in there, but it flashes yellow if an announcement's being made. But I don't know if it's an announcement, if it's a lockdown, if, you know. So the kids know, I've worked with this group of shit kids since they were in kindergarten. So the kids know that I can't hear. So most of you didn't know that?
They're gonna try to get your attention, but that's not, we should be.
Blowing my mind right now.
Yeah. Um, does our building inspector or our higher chief understand that this is going on in the building?
Chris, it's a frontline. Yeah, so, uh, I've said things and I've told them, so I'm, I try not to be less sure.
Sure.
The kids, I mean, sometimes I am. Um, last year we had a fire alarm block and I had five children. And the kids thought it was a joke at first and they were like, oh my God, it's David, you can't hear the fire.
You're not doing it, yeah, yeah.
We're the last one out of the building, yeah, it's great.
I'm sorry that that's the position that you're in, thank you for sharing that with us.
So what brings you here? What makes you want to be part of what we do?
I think everybody should be offered the same opportunities. So I was hoping that I could help.
Kevin, questions or?
Uh, is this a meeting once a month for an hour here or in Zoom that works out for you?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Can I just ask you, when it comes to people with disability, and I know you work in this school system, so I'm gonna go away from this school system for a minute and ask you, when you think of people with disability or working with pieces of people with disability or what we as people with disability need, and I include me and you in that, what jumps out at you? That's a loaded question, but what?
Going to the grocery store. I can't go to the grocery store alone because I'll stand at the cash register and sometimes I don't know, you know, what the person's saying. So I typically bring my son with me. Or, um, like when people will wear a mask, like not just how they're hearing, like I have no idea. Like, in some places aren't overly accessible to everybody. The playground, for instance. Or we have, um, at the middle school, we have state police are coming in. My brother's a trooper, so state police are coming in at the end of May and, um, they're gonna do an event for us. But we have a student in a wheelchair, so we need to make sure that she can get out onto the grass so she can participate in all the events too. But they don't think of all of that.
So reach out to us because we have all the mats. We use the mats to like put the color on. So same thing before that happened, yeah.
So no, I, so May 26th, they're coming. I've got, um, they're gonna land a helicopter, I've got a stop team, search team, drone team, K-9 coming.
Can I come? That sounds really cool.
I had a helicopter the last two years coming.
I could use the K-9 team to track my teenagers down, so. That's, but that, but, but I, I hear you, I really do in terms of.
Not every place is accessible to everybody, everybody has something different. I don't think people think about that.
What do you think you, um, how, what do you see your role here? How do you, your, what would your participation, participation be? What do you think you?
Help any way I can get members of the public to join in, can we find grants? Can we, uh, the middle school again, when we first started, the ramp going up was awful. Um, one of our doors in our school, kids can't get out with the handicap button, the front door doesn't have a handicap button. You don't even know that, the handicap.
Isn't it, is that still not working?
Um, so the doors have to be locked.
Yeah.
So if a child wants to use the handicap button to get out, the door's not going to open unless the doors are locked.
Yeah.
The front door that heads to the field, I've asked for a button on that door multiple times too. There was not a button at all on that door. Only, I'm pretty sure one door in that building has the button on it that does not work.
But not at least you have the ramp in the front.
Yeah, the ramps in the front, yeah, yeah, yeah. And I didn't have to walk in the summer.
From the school to the.
Do you guys have any questions?
No, thank you so much for coming in. Do you have any questions for us?
No.
And then, and then once a month works for you, you said, on a Thursday?
I'm fine with that.
And FYI for you, if you can't make a meeting, we do use Zoom and we can set this in up for closed caption too.
Okay.
So just, that's, that's, that's not in our book, that's not even an accommodation, that's just something we can do.
I think one thing for everybody too is, uh, we're all kind of flexible. So if like it gets to the point where we need to, you know, change the, Thursday's not working for everybody, we want to go to a different day and it works on everyone, we can always adjust too. So it's just, this has kind of been our regular slotted, you know, time, day and time it's worked so far. But if it ever becomes an issue, we can always revisit some.
Thank you for coming here and for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the goal for all of you quickly will be, you know, you can do this right now while you're all here. Um, is we would have a motion, we would have to give a motion to one of us to accept or reject one of you, two of you, three of you, four of you. Um, assuming it's approved or you're approved, then what we do is I, I will send that information up to the board of selectmen to their administrative staff, who will then put it on their agenda. And the board of selectmen, as I'm sure many of you know from things you've been involved in time before, will get the letter that says the commission of disability recommends A, B, C, D, uh, potentially to be members of, and they give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. If they give it a thumbs up, you're then asked, uh, you receive a letter in the mail to commit to town hall, raise your hand, take the oath of commitment to the world and the Titan, and you're good to go for three years.
And then I think just conflict, conflict interest. But committed, is we have to do conflict interest by committees and commissions?
There is, they will.
Yeah, there'll be, it's online now, but you have to do the conflict interest law.
Yeah.
Uh, so the town, when you get sworn in, the town clerk will give you that packet, which is now still, luckily you could use to get a packet. Now you just get a link, you go, do it online, doesn't take very long.
And you will periodically.
Yeah, yeah, you do.
And then also periodically you'll be asked from the town as a member of a committee or commission to do things related like doing the online information for the ethics regulations that the Commonwealth requires. There, you know, like a one hour video where you look at different things, answer questions, that type of thing. And then you get a certificate that you provide back to one of the town administrative offices, whichever, whichever office is working in that particular type of situation. And usually once or twice a year, there's something that takes about an hour to do like that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, so what are the checks and balances, for instance? Like, so if we aren't as a town complying with certain codes or laws by laws, who is responsible for the checks and balances? Would the commission of disability in the town be somebody?
Well, are you, are you asking for checks and balances when it comes to disability?
Yeah, so like we're, we're not in compliance, say at, at a public town, for instance, say it's the playground.
So let me give you, let me give you a simple, relatively quick answer, short answer, which is right now the compliance officer, if you, and I use that term deliberately to, for anything ADA related to a public facility in town is me. I am certified by the Commonwealth as a community access monitor and an advanced community access monitor, which means additional training that I've had. So I can take the hundreds and hundreds of pieces of regulations, go to anything that relates to the town, public access, public employment, et cetera, determine whether you have a complaint, brought it to Jonathan's attention. Is the town in compliance, is the town not in compliance? If the town is not in compliance, I notify the appropriate department and the town administrator and the person who brings the complaint. If they are in compliance, I will tell you again why they're in compliance. And, you know, if they have to rectify it, what they need to rectify it. A lot of the things that the town needs to do to become compliant unfortunately cost money. Some things don't cost money, they can make administrative changes and procedures in some things. And that's something that is a work in progress, like, you know, the town policies that we're beginning to do or I'm beginning to do, for policies and procedures for everything, even a meeting, every public meeting, for full access for people with disability, for card interpreters if we need and things like that. And that's a simple example of making sure all the departments understand, all the town managers, all the committees and the commissions, so that people are trained on how to do it, looking at different types of public access that have to happen. Every single meeting now, for example, has to be available on Zoom for people with disability in town automatically. Most departments, most commissions don't know that. So some of the stuff is easier fixes, but most of the stuff that are fixes involves money, involves education and resources. Having said that, you may come to me, for example, again, I got a call earlier about something that was recently done, a sidewalk that was put in a couple of years ago on Center Street. That sidewalk is not compliant, but that was before I was here. Another resident came to me with a sidewalk that was done about six or eight months ago on School Street, thinking it wasn't compliant. Well, most of the sidewalk was compliant, even though it wasn't set well, it was still compliant. What wasn't compliant is where some of the down ramps were. But in working with the town and the highway department, we were able to fix that. So it didn't have to go out of the town. The goal is to make sure that the town is always making its best effort to be compliant. That's when, that's how you avoid lawsuits from the residents. That's how you avoid lawsuits from the federal government or the justice department. So as a coordinator, my job or whoever the coordinator's job is, whoever wins that position, part of the responsibility is to make sure the town is always working towards becoming more and more compliant. That was the short answer?
That was the short answer. So quick too, I want to add to that.
And what, can I answer you?
No, keep in mind though, because a lot of the things that we're gonna, that we come across, and for example, at the school with the fire alarm system, until they hit a specific threshold of renovation, a lot of those things are code compliant, given the year built or the last renovation date. So it's like, but they certainly should be making the proper accommodations if they have a faculty member who needs those accommodations. So that's like a whole different conversation. But a lot of, even like the playground, like you could, we could complain that this community playground isn't accessible because it has p-stone, but when it was installed, that was, you know, what was required. Um, so it's kind of, and you know, to Chris's point earlier, it's again, we all, we all want to do better, but it's, you know, some of, financially, you're just gonna take baby steps.
So the old library that they were talking, thinking about redoing, they were thinking about renting, renting that library. I had to look at that library and look at what's the cost of the renovations they were doing. Well, the renovation cost would have been many hundreds of thousands of dollars. They, the value of the building was 314,000. Once they hit that 30% whole threshold, which is 90,000, now you talk about having to do the entire thing, which cost, it cost many millions of dollars. So as a result of that, that's one of the main reasons that library couldn't continue to exist. Because unfortunately, as the ADA coordinator, part of my responsibility along with others was to say no because it wasn't compliant, right? You have to do the, that's when sometimes you do the heavy lifting and nobody wants you to do, but that's what we do.
Can I just ask you, Dana, because I know you just, how long have you been at the middle school? Because you started at the DES.
Um, this is my second year at the middle school.
So.
So what was it?
Did you, did you have the same restraints at DES as you were having at the middle school?
Yes. But the difference at the elementary school is I was, um, in the TLC room, so I was always with a bunch of people. Now, at the middle school, I'm not always with.
Adults.
Adults, yeah.
Backwardly, my heart.
Yeah.
On that note, I'd like to make a motion to approve the applications of Chris, Andrea, Leah Quinn, Dana Rose and Tim Toolen.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second, do we have any discussion? Here we're done, I'll call for a vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And Jonathan?
Aye.
So you are all, congratulations. All working, thank you so much. Um, I will send the email out this evening to, uh, Leanne, board of selectmen's office, so that she'll have it when she comes in on Monday morning. And I'm hoping she will have it, I think she's planning to try and have it on the, uh, agenda for the meeting next Wednesday night.
Yes.
And if that's the case, then, um, I should be able to tell you by next Thursday that it was approved and that board of selectmen will be in touch with you guys to come in.
Yeah, they, they don't need to attend that meeting, right?
No, no, no.
They just, they get sworn in at some point.
I'm sorry?
You decide they get sworn in at some point.
Yeah, what will happen is they'll make the formal, hopefully the formal vote of yes. Um, we have the liaison here now, we'll call and sort everything you have to say to if they have any questions about anything. Um, and then once the, once that's done, it's just a matter of the board of selectmen saying you had the letter, so you can come in with the letter and give it to, um, the clerk's office and have this where you win, you sign, you sign, you sign in in effect.
It takes like two minutes.
Yeah, it's literally a two minute thing. You can go, there's no appointment necessary or anything like that, just stop in, you know, it's gonna be there. And then that's done, and then our next meeting will be the first Thursday of June, which I believe is June 1st.
Yep.
At four thirty. Um, and in the meantime, once you're, once you're approved, it's sworn in, I will make sure that you guys receive a copy of some amount of material to start looking at. And don't, really can't do it all by the way.
Can't wait.
And then text me, call me anytime you have any questions about any of that material or the regulations or rules. And I will do my best to answer anything I can answer for you, because it's, it is a long, it's a big learning curve.
So Dana just said, he said to call me, I guess I can't call him. So what, is email fast?
Yeah, email too, everything, as much as dating is, as much as dating is, dating, dating is lip, you use lip reading, everything, everything talks to me.
Oh, good.
And translates to speech, my phone, my computer, obviously I talk too much too. So yes, emails are great, or texts is great.
Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very, very much.
I'll try and help you go pay for the meds. What the pressure is.
Just, well, I don't think we'll just, I'll set it up on time the day before. I was, you know what I'll do is a, a little bit before I'll stomp in quickly, like at the end of the day. And we'll just look at where they need to be set up and I'll get, um, can I just?
Stop them off. Can you just say, do me a favor?
Um, the 26th is the, is the date, but I'm gonna take that first one, do that one to go and set everything up.
Yeah.
Um, I'll see you at nine, but the last one, set everything up, make sure that's all set.
Okay. Dana, what I'm, what I'm gonna do, Dana, is send you an email.
Okay.
Um, unless you have mine already, I think if you don't, I'll send you an email because I have your information. And just, I'll note in there that you've requested that the grass mats be used for such and such a date. If you could just respond back, ask you this formally, just in writing, if we could provide grass mats for the event If you could just respond back, ask you this formally, just in writing, if we could provide grass mats for the event that's gonna be happening at the school and tell us what it is, and like just, only two sentences, just so we have a record of the request, because we have to do that.
Okay, got it.
And it's that simple, and then every time, and then Kevin, can you connect on the rest of it?
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to us, public, any, we don't have anybody with us on Zoom, any other public input?
Here and then, all along, next three meeting dates, which is June 1st, July 6th and August 3rd. That works for everyone?
Seems to be.
I will be, at least on the July one, I will probably be joining this, assuming I'm one way or whatever role I'm in, probably be joined by Zoom, I expect, I'll be in Idaho for about a month.
Seeing the baby.
So seeing the baby and doing some hiking and climbing.
Nice.
Both.
Just come back in one piece.
Well, I hope.
And with peace of mind.
Oh, I'd definitely come back with peace of mind. So thank you. And then the other item we have is the minutes. Oh, yeah, uh-huh.
Yes.
Yeah, I skipped by that.
Yeah, and thank you for doing those minutes, by the way.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to point out with minutes too, like, I, I know you've been doing them, but if you're alone, you're playing, you want somebody else to take over for a while.
Well, I think at some point, now that we're gonna have, well, it's kind of, we're in a weird space. I don't mind, I'll just remain the clerk and keep doing them for now. But once we determine if the DA coordinator is leaving us and we have new members, we'll probably reorganize.
And I'll include that.
Just wanted to point you down here.
And as I said, I will include on the next meeting to have the agenda at the beginning of the discussion.
Well, I, from what I can, just to revisit real, real quick, from the conversation I had with the town administrator is, we're gonna make that recommendation to the board of selectmen.
Yeah.
So we're gonna drive that conversation from then.
Yep.
Cool.
So, but we, you know, it's okay for us to discuss, so we'll just have to vote on it and then actually discuss further and vote on it in the next meeting.
So do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Sorry, I'm looking, because one of them I can make a motion on and the other one I can't.
Oh, so actually, I can, I can do that.